Meeting will come to order. A quorum being present, the 368th Annual Town Meeting will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. I have been advised by the town clerk that the warrant has been properly served. I would entertain a motion to dispense with the formal reading of the warrant. Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I have nominated David Capel as Assistant Moderator for this meeting, and would entertain a motion to appoint him. It's been moved, seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. Would the Assistant Moderator and the following tellers stand to be sworn by the town clerk? And Kathy, if you'd introduce the tellers, please.
Good evening, everybody. Can I have the follower, following tellers stand up to be sworn in, please? Chris Muraki, Frank Snow, Jack Manning, Tom Edwards, Penny Cott pipes, Ian White, Peter Topin, George Kelly, Susan Frankel, and Rich Travers, please. And Mr. Capel. If you raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear to uphold the position as tellers to which you've been appointed? Thank you.
And to the Deputy Moderator and the clerks, thank you very much. I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize a dignitary here in the audience tonight, Representative Congress, Stephen Lynch. A little bit later in the proceedings Congressman Lynch will be giving us a report. I'd ask the Chairman of the Advisory Committee to introduce the board members to the audience.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sorry, a little short. Good evening, my name is Maura Curran, Curran Chair for the Advisory Board. And to, from my left, we have Frank Judge, our Vice Chair, Bob Nelson, Mark Sandum, Mike Westdort, Karen Connolly, and Jeff Burns. Absent this evening are Jamie Gilmore due to illness, and Anthony Antonello, which we wish a quick recovery, who's home suffering from pneumonia, and he will be missed.
I'd appreciate it if you'd give the Advisory Committee a round of applause, they work so very hard. I'd ask the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen to introduce the board members, the Town Administrator, and the Accountant, please.
Town Moderator, Mr. Bowen, my name is Sean Harris. Beside me is Tony Vignani, Rick Murray, John Danahue, Marty O'Toole. Beside Marty is our Town Council Jim Toomey. Immediately to my left is our Town Administrator Trisha Van Kazy, and to her left is our Town Accountant Nancy Holt.
I'd also ask for a round of applause for the board. And I'd ask Mr. Hebert, the Chairman of the School Committee, to introduce the members of the School Committee. And the Superintendent, of course.
Good evening, thank you. I'd like to introduce John McCarthy, the Superintendent of Schools, Paul Donlin, Business Director, Brenda Bowen, Chair, School Committee Member, Mike Long, School Committee Member, and Robin Laverne, and Mike Hayes, thank you. Not here tonight, thank you.
Some brief announcements. I'd like the members of the meeting to remember Vincent J. Calicious III, the retired Conservation Agent, and he was also on various boards and committees, and Arthur Dumphy of the Library. Both have passed, and if you just take a moment to remember each in their prayers, and remember them for their service to the town. Thank you. My name is Richard Bowen, and I'm the Town Moderator. I'm suffering from laryngitis, which is why my voice is a little hard to hear tonight. The Moderator chairs the meeting and decides questions of order. I do not vote on articles because I don't take a position on them. Please let me take a couple of minutes to tell you how our meeting works. Town of Situate has two branches of government. The Executive Branch represented here by the Selectmen and the School Committee, and the Legislative Branch. Town Meeting, in other words you, you are the Legislative Branch, and each of you is a citizen legislator. The Executive Branch Boards, whose members are our guests here today, have made requests to you asking for your approval. These requests take the form of the Articles and the Warrant. The purpose of this meeting is to allow you, the citizen legislators, to review these Executive Branch requests. You are within your rights as citizen legislators to question the Executive Branch members, and then to act upon the requests as you see fit. As I always remind you, this is your meeting, it's not a School Committee meeting, it's not a Selectmen's meeting, it is a meeting of you, the citizen legislators. You each have a very important friend in your work. The Advisory Committee is your Board. The Advisory Committee is Town Meeting's standing committee, and meets all year round to examine Executive Branch requests. The Advisory Committee works hard, serving as your watchdog, and it will make recommendations to you about each of the Executive Branch requests put before this meeting. You should pay close attention to its reports. Like any legislative body, we operate under certain procedural rules. These derive from state law, the parliamentary annual town meeting time, the Charter, the bylaws and custom. Here is a summary. All non-voters, except for professional consultants advising Town Boards, must sit in the non-voter section in the left front bleacher. I've made an exception for a member of the press who needed a table over here. Ordinarily, only registered voters may address the meeting. However, I will assume the consent of the meeting to allow non-voters to speak, provided they are duly recognized unless a timely objection is raised. Persons wishing to address the meeting must, and I repeat must, each time rising to speak identify themselves to the meeting by name and address. This traditional courtesy shows respect to those who are present, and helps the officials who keep the records of this meeting to identify the speakers for purposes of the minutes. Even though I know your name, most of the people here will probably know your name, the town clerk who keeps the record will know your name. We must get your name each time for posterity. Speakers representing a Board, community group, or client should state this relationship to the meeting. If you are an article sponsor, please make your motion before you make your speech. Otherwise, I will rule you out of order. After making a motion, an article sponsor will be allowed up to ten minutes for a presentation. Sponsors of resolutions will be allowed five minutes. Sponsors need not use the full allotment of time. And at this time, I remind you that the Town Meeting has always respected the proverb, brevity is the soul of wit. All motions must be seconded, and no motion is in order until it has been seconded. Town Meeting members are encouraged to speak from the center microphone. I will attempt to recognize members in the order that they arrive at the various microphones, but you make my job easier if you speak from the middle. Only after being recognized by the Moderator may a member address the meeting. Shouting out from the floor, or speaking without recommendation, recognition, shows disrespect to your fellow Town Meeting members and will not be allowed, and you will not be recognized by me. Speakers from the floor are allowed five minutes on the first round of discussion on an article, and three minutes on the second round. A speaker from the floor who wishes to address the meeting for a second time on an article must wait until persons who have not yet spoken have had their turn. Speakers, please confine your remarks to the motion that is on the floor. Please address only matters of general interest, do not indulge in personal discussion in any way or attack the motives of a meeting member. You may ask questions of any town official through the Moderator. Be advised that a town official may choose not to respond, or may respond in a manner that you find unsatisfactory. Neither the Moderator nor the meeting has the power to compel an answer, in which case your sole recourse is to draw your own conclusions from the response and to vote accordingly. Should you tire of the debate, and this is an important one, should you tire of the debate, you may suffer in silence if you wish, or you may offer the motion, "I move the question." It's very important that if you wish to move the question, that you do so upon being recognized. It's not appropriate to offer a speech on the merits of a proposal and then say, "I move the question," because I will not recognize that motion. So please just make the motion, and hold your speech. A point of order relates only to questions of procedure, and is not a mechanism for reviving an article or prolonging a debate. There are no points of information, a question about an article should be raised only during the debate on that article. On voice votes, I listen to hear whether the motion passes or fails. If you question my call, please rise. If seven or more voters rise, I'll ask for a teller counted vote. The tellers will only count those in the bleachers or floor seating sections. Persons standing away from the seating area will not be counted. Section 20,150, subsection G of the Town Bylaws allows the Moderator to declare a two-thirds vote. If the Moderator's declaration is immediately questioned by seven or more voters, we will take account. The acoustics in this room are bad, as you have noticed. Anyone having trouble hearing what's going on, please feel free to move to another section. There are plenty of empty seats towards the front. Please silence your cell phones. A wireless microphone is available to those of you who might wish to use it. Kindly raise your hand, and I'll have the runner bring you the microphone. When I recognize you, you may speak. As you came in, you were handed a copious pile of paper. There are recycling bins towards the rear of the auditorium. If you choose to keep all the reading material for your bedtime consideration, that's fine, but if you want to throw it away, the recycling bin would be an appropriate place. We have no one who has resolutions. We have one report. We are very pleased to have Congressman Lynch to give us a report from Congress. So Congressman Lynch, if you'd like to come up, please take the mic.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And thank you, members of Town Meeting. I understand that you've got a full plate on the warrant this evening, so I will not abuse my privilege. Normally, I'm in Washington four or five days a week, so I really appreciate the opportunity to come before Town Meeting and to talk about what's going on down in Washington. I think the most important issue that has arisen in Congress as to affecting the Town of Situate has been the recent National Flood Insurance Program controversy. And I just wanted to take a minute and explain what has gone on since the last time we met. We had a meeting down at the Mill Wharf with a lot of residents from Situate who had been adversely affected. We had another meeting in Marshfield, we had a meeting in Situate, one in Quincy. The end of all that, the end of the process, the public process, and going back to Washington, ended in a complete change to the Bigget Waters Flood Insurance Act. We actually passed, and the President signed, a new piece of legislation, the Homeowner Flood Insurance Affordability Act. And I just want to touch on a few of the changes, because really, the changes were initiated and requested by people here in Situate and along other communities along the South Shore that were affected by the earlier law. The new law, in particular, rolls back many of the provisions of the Bigget Waters Insurance Act. Specifically, the law, it repeals those triggers that caused properties to go to full actuarial premium rates immediately, including the buying or selling of homes or elapsed policy. It also restores grandfathering, which ensures homeowners and negatively affected, not negatively affected, by relying on the Federal Emergency Management Agency maps that were later turned out to be wrong. It caps the rate of increases at an average of 15% overall, but also prevents any homeowner individually from receiving an increase that is more than 18% on an individual policy. It protects properties newly mapped into a flood zone for immediate and extreme premium rates, and brings those properties in at a significantly reduced preferred risk premium level. The new legislation also mandates that FEMA refund premiums that had already been paid by policy holders that are reduced by the terms of the new act. So if you had astronomical rates and you paid that earlier premium, the bill, the new bill requires FEMA to refund those premiums. It also requires FEMA to notify local communities of its intention to issue revised flood maps, and at least, for at least 60 days before any new map is released. And it requires the FEMA work with local communities inappropriate data and mapping models. It requires the completion of an affordability study, which we had requested in the first legislation, but this time Congress actually appropriated the money that will allow FEMA to conduct that study. And the law also directs FEMA to minimize the number of homes with policies that have annual premiums that exceed 1% of the covered value. The law also makes significant changes to the National Flood Insurance Program, and will require implementation regulations from FEMA. According to FEMA representatives right now, they're meeting with the local insurers and national insurers to figure out how to best implement the new law. FEMA is currently, well, one option being discussed is to temporarily delay the effective date of newly drawn maps until FEMA has put in place the reforms required under the Affordability Act. For Situate, you're already delayed because of the appeal that had been accepted, but for places like Quincy, they'll actually benefit from that provision. I also want to thank Jim Cantwell, State Representative Jim Cantwell, was very, very helpful to me during this whole process, as well as Representative Garrett Bradley and Senator Bob Headland, they were terrific on this. I want to also thank, on the technical end, I want to thank the Coastal Coalition of both Situate and Marshfield, who were extremely helpful in making our appeal to change this law. It is an honor for me and a privilege to represent the Town of Situate in the United States Congress. I thank you for the opportunity to be heard tonight. God bless the Town of Situate, and God bless these United States of America, thank you.
Thank you very much, Congressman. I know we're very impressed that you honored us with your presence. All right, I'll accept a motion to adjourn the Annual Town Meeting for the purpose of convening the special and to resume at the close of the special. Is there a motion? It's been moved, seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, I declare the Annual Town Meeting in recess until the conclusion of the special town meeting. Special Town Meeting, Article One. On the motion, Chairman Harris.
If it's okay with you, Mr. Moderator, I just would like to publicly thank a couple of boards, it'll take about 30 seconds.
That's all right.
I'd like to first of all thank everyone for coming out tonight to take time out of their busy schedules to attend this Annual Town Meeting. Secondly, I'd like to publicly thank the entire Advisory Committee, Capital Planning Committee, the School Committee, as well as all the other commissions and boards for their time, expertise, meeting week after week. Then to forward their opinions and recommendations onto us, the Board of Selectmen. Now we sit here before you, the Town, with what we feel is a complete, well-thought-out, balanced agenda. Later we'll hear from other town officials, but before we do, I would like to say how thankful I am as Chairman of the Board of Selectmen to have such dedicated professionals and individuals managing our town each and every day. Thank you. Okay, Article One of the special town meeting. I move that the Town transfer from retained earnings in the Transfer Station Enterprise Fund, oh, wait a minute. I'm sorry, that's the wrong one. Unpaid bills, all right. I guess I was right, okay. I move that the Town transfer from retained earnings in the Transfer Station Enterprise fund the sum of $294.12 for the purpose of paying one unpaid bill from the fiscal year 2013. The vendor is Janelle Motors, it's coming from retained earnings. The unpaid bills account is number 063 dot 433 0999 dot 5400.
It's been moved, seconded, it's been discussed, recommendation from the Advisory Committee.
The Advisory Board recommends approval of this motion.
Discussion, there being no one at the microphones, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, I declare the unanimous vote, it required nine tenths of approval to pass. Article Number Two, on the motion, Chairman Harris.
I move that the Town authorize the use of $23,873.11 of insurance proceeds received for repairs to the roof at the Situate Harbor Community Building.
It's been moved, seconded, discussion Chairman Harris.
This, as I just had mentioned, this article is as a result of the roof leaking at PF, otherwise known as PF-44, and it's what we're doing. We have to spend it, and we're getting reimbursed from our insurance company.
Do you want to?
Point of order, please, Mr. Moderator.
Wait, wait.
I thought we were dealing with Article Two.
Article Two, skip the page.
You can't address the meeting until we've been recognized. Chairman Harris.
I grabbed two pages at once. I'm sorry, I did Article Three. All right, forget that.
I like it when we move quick, though.
I just, all right, sorry.
Go ahead, Sean.
I move that the Town transfer $486,000 from the Stabilization Fund to accounts 001 dot 428 dot 510 dot 5120 and 001 dot 428 dot 0520 dot 5271 to reimburse Town Departments to cover the costs associated with the January 14th blizzard.
It's been moved, seconded, discussion Chairman Harris.
What this is, is as a result of the blizzard that we had in January, the doom, as we, some of us may or may not know, just south of those homes on Surfside Road, the doom was compromised, it was practically leveled, a lot of material went into Musquashka Pond. We not only had to rebuild that doom, as well as Surfside Road and Oceanside Drive.
From the Chairman of the Advisory Committee, Chairman Curran.
Good evening. After the transfer of this $486,000, the stabilization fund balance will be at $2,522,762. The Advisory Board unanimously recommends approval of the motion.
Discussion, there being no one at the mics, which requires a two-thirds vote for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Article Three on the motion, Chairman Harris.
Okay, we'll try this one again. I move that the Town authorize the sum of $23,873.11 of insurance proceeds received for repairs to the roof at the Situate Harbor Community Building.
The movement is seconded, discussion from Chairman Harris.
As I said just a minute ago, this is a result of a roof failure we had formerly known as PF-44. We have to spend this money, and we're now getting reimbursed from the insurance company.
From the Advisory Committee, Chairman Curran.
This article just authorizes the reconciliation of accounts. We actually have the reimbursement in-house, and according to Town Rules, we need to approve moving this into the appropriate account. So the Advisory Board unanimously supports the motion on the floor.
Discussion, there being no one at the mics, approval of this article requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Next article, Chairman Harris.
I move that the Town transfer the sum of $42,382.74 from Article Four, Item 15, sewer equipment and repair from March 3rd, 2007 Annual Town Meeting Warrant in the sum of $38,000 from fiscal year 2014 retained earnings, totaling $382.74 for the purpose of funding increased repair expenses for the Wastewater Treatment Plant Enterprise Fund for the fiscal year 2014.
It's been moved, seconded by Selectman Murray, discussion Chairman Harris.
As it says in your Advisory Committee books, this was necessary to replace some equipment at the sewer treatment plant, such as motors, pumps, and check valves.
From the Advisory Committee, Chairman Curran.
The Advisory Board recommends approval of the motion on the floor. The sewer retained earnings account was certified in 2013 at $1,696,300. We recommend approval of the motion.
Discussion from the floor, there being no one at the mics. Approval of this motion requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Next article, Chairman Harris.
I move that the Town transfer from free cash the sum of $175,000 for the purpose of paying increased costs of snow removal for the fiscal year 2014.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion Chairman Harris.
As we all know, what type of winter we had, this is just an overrun. We were forced to deficit spend in our snow and ice budget to keep the roads clean and safe.
From the Advisory Committee, Chairman Curran.
Our certified free cash at the end of 2013 was $2,813,553. Certainly can accommodate the $175,000 transfer to cover these storm costs. The Advisory Board unanimously supports the motion, seven to zero.
Discussion from the floor, seeing no one at the mics. Approval of this motion requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Article Six, Chairman Harris.
I move that the Town extend the term of the intermunicipal agreement for regional cooperation in the provision of solid waste and recycling services for the South Shore Recycling Cooperative for an additional term through 2018. And further, that the Town authorize a Board of Selectmen to execute and deliver an amended intermunicipal agreement to effect the extension of the term and any other changes therein.
It's been moved, seconded by Selectman Murray, discussion Chairman Harris.
What this is, is just like I said, an extension of the agreement. Mr. Caffey had come in and given us some information about it. What it does is, with all the South Shore communities, it kind of gives us an economy of scale at our transfer station, it can reduce our costs for such as bringing our solid waste down to the energy plants, what we could do to lower our costs for recycling, give us other outlets that we might not have if we were just a standalone town.
From the Advisory Committee, Chairman Curran.
This reauthorization just requires Town Meeting approval. The Advisory Board recommends approval of this motion unanimously.
Discussion, there being no one standing at the microphones. Approval of this motion requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. I will accept a motion to adjourn the special town meeting and reconvene the Annual Town Meeting. It's been moved and seconded, discussion, Mr. Kelly.
450 Country Way, I had raised my hand to ask a question about the 2007 year when this money has been moved over. Has that been sitting idle, or has it been earning interest, or what? They said they brought it up for money, that the Annual Town Meeting, sewer equipment, et cetera, Item 15, March 3rd, 2007. And how can money be sitting in our accounts? From 2007, for seven years, was it drawing interest, was it doing anything? I'd like to know, I think the Town, I tried to get your attention, but things were very fast on the first.
Yeah, yeah, things move fast here, as it do. But I accept the blame for not recognizing you. I perhaps didn't allow you time to get to the microphone. Usually I don't allow us to revisit things that we passed over, but where it's been my mistake, well, I can fix it. So can someone answer Mr. Kelly's question about whether we've been getting interest on this money, or has it been a piggy bank in the Town Administrator's office, or just, you know? Tell us what's going on with the money. Chairman Harris.
To answer Mr. Kelly's question, the answer is yes. Every few years, we close out these capital funds, and they do earn interest, yes.
Thank you. My other question, Mr. Moderator.
George, good question, good, okay, go ahead.
George Kelly, 450 Country Way. In the counting, I have a feeling tonight that we're going to be employed In the counting, I have a feeling tonight that we're going to be employed to count. And I frankly, I'm in this section right here. Now, as I walk down, I count one row at a time. And those people should sit down so that I can see the hands in the second row and the third row. Now, I assume others are doing the same type of counting, but I've never been told that you can count the whole unit with them all waving their hands and they won't take them down. And I question, what is the proper instruction to give the citizens?
All right, I'll take your point, Mr. Kelly. I'll offer some brief instructions. First of all, this is not the Chicago Town Meeting, so only raise one hand, not two. Because Mr. Kelly is only going to count one hand, not the two. And unless you're doing some aerobic exercise, save yourself the trouble. So just raise one hand. And then I would say to the tellers, as you work your way up, each teller can say to a row, once it's been counted, "Thanks, folks, put down your hands, I've got you." Does that work, Mr. Kelly? You can just raise your hand if it does. His hand is up, so I think we've got a go there. Now, did we vote on the adjourning and the processing to the end? All right, I don't remember, I don't remember whether we voted on the motion to adjourn the special town meeting and continue on to the annual. All those in favor of adjourning the special town meeting and continuing on to the annual reconvening, the annual signify by saying aye. All those opposed, so voted, declared unanimous. The special town meeting is adjourned and we now commence with the annual town meeting. Before we begin the annual town meeting, Chairman Harris and Chairman Curran have asked each to deliver a State of the Union, if you will, as to how the town is going. I believe Mr. Selectman Vignani is also going to speak under Mr. Harris's presentation. So if the two of you want to flip a coin as to who goes first, go ahead. Ladies first, beauty before age, so.
Aren't we nice this evening? Good evening and welcome. This year's budget process was not unique. In fact, it was brought forth with very careful consideration, backed by fiscally conservative goals with an eye on our future. We are fortunate this year to have an overall 4.28% increase in our operating budget due to positive growth trends and level funded state aid and also additional resources from the very hard work of our solar array, our wind turbine, and also the meals tax, all contributors to the growth. We still have our challenges with the Plymouth County retirement, sorry, somebody's playing with the volume, and we will continue to see that challenge in the upcoming years in the tune of seven to eight percent, which will challenge us in our operating budget as we look forward. Careful consideration was taken on behalf of our town departments and they were careful to address the needs as increasing needs face our building inspector department, addressing our facility needs, and also adding a coastal resource officer to assist with our growing coastal storm and FEMA issues, as referenced earlier. This year in your booklets, you will find some additional information regarding line item changes in the operating budget and an overall breakdown of the school budget as requested on page thirty-four. We hope you find this helpful. Some other articles of note this evening, address CPC purchases, a water resources zoning map change, a seawall petition, and an article asking us to evaluate the programming needs for our growing senior population. There are many passionate goals and desires that are competing against one another in our town for a finite source of funding. As we move through tonight's articles, it is with those competing interests in mind that we must collectively as a body decide how to prioritize and set a course for our future fiscal roadmap. The advisory board evaluated each article, each department line through interviews and petitioners with great care and consideration, taking into account past and future financial commitments. We hope you find the comments and the guidance helpful when making your decisions this evening. And lastly, I would remiss not to say that next year, we will have four vacancies on the advisory board. It's a terrific board and really one of the only citizens' boards that ensure transparency and an opportunity for citizens to really have an impact on what happens, so we hope you will put forth your applications to the moderator. So thank you very much.
Chairman Curran. Chairman Curran, I know you're retiring from board, thank you for your hard work and leadership. Chairman Harris.
Thank you. I'd just like to present a little overview of what we've accomplished since our last annual town meeting. First of all, as most of us know, the solar array has been online since last September. It was projected to produce about $200,000 a year in revenue. It is going to exceed that to the point where we are the first town in this Commonwealth to be 100%, actually, we're more than 100% totally green. We are. Thank you, thank you. To the point where we're selling some of the electricity to a neighboring school in Hanover, the South Shore Votec. Secondly, the public facilities master plan has been making great progress as the library will probably be start construction this fall by the year end, right? The school feasibility study for the new middle school will be completed by June 15th and before voters by the end of the year. There'll be a schematic design, I think we heard a few minutes ago by another speaker, for the public safety complex. It's going to be in the area of about $15 to $16 million. That hopefully will be before the voters at the end of this year as well. Secondly, if you have seen any of our selectmen's meetings, in the last annual town meeting, we voted the $22 million for the water project to try to, definitely will solve our groundwater issue. We most recently just went out to contact, contract with three different firms that will be doing three different areas in the town starting in about one month, so we can get this moving along as fast as we can. What that is, we have approximately three and a half miles that we target to get done by this first round. Second, or next, as Mr. Congressman Stephen Lynch had mentioned about the flood maps. Looking at my notes here, I really don't know where it would be without people like Dave Ball to educate many of us to get this ball rolling, all right? But. And I have to say, I saw firsthand what happened when these maps, you know, were first introduced and what the outcome was going to, were potentially going to be for a lot of homeowners. Then what people like Neil Duggan and Conservation Agent Laura Hobart, a lot of town planner, I saw firsthand, not forgetting about a town administrator, of course, but how much time that they had to put aside their day-to-day activities and concentrate on this very hot issue. So as we heard earlier, you know, quite successful at that and I hope we continue to be. And lastly, I'd just like to touch on the fact of our expanded services for the Council on Aging, with a new social worker. We also have a new facts coordinator to address the problem Situate and many other communities have with our obitu, our drug problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Sean. Sean got the good part. He got to tell you all of the great accomplishments that we've made. I am a selectman as well as a chairman of the Financial Forecasting Committee and I'm going to bore you with some numbers for a minute. First, the Financial Forecasting Committee kind of starts the whole budget process. Our group takes a look before the budget starts and takes a look at the sources of revenue and the shared expenses and tries to get a good idea of where the budget's going to be headed this year. The group consists of myself, the town administrator, the school superintendent, the building, business manager of the school, school committee member, advisory committee member, town assessor, town accountant, town treasurer, I'm sure I'm missing somebody, but it's a very good diverse group of people that have good knowledge in what this process is. And I'm just going to run through some of the highlights of what we're doing here. And again, the goal of this is to come down to a number that we then split and the school gets two-thirds of this net number and the town departments get one-third of this net number. And then superintendent and the town administrator dive into the details and figure out how much each department gets for their budget. So there's a handout in the back there, if you happen to get it, it gives five years of a forecast that we have here. And midway down through 2015, you can see that we estimate that there'll be a little bit more than $64 million of revenue coming into this town. And of that money, $48 million of it is our property taxes. And then another 1.2 million of it is the two and a half percent increase that we have. So you can see that of that 62, a large percentage of it is from our property taxes. Other components of that are state aid, which is about $7 million, local receipts, which are auto and boat excise taxes, permits, ambulance revenue and that sort of stuff is about $5 million. And then we have new growth, which is new building that will start accruing taxes in the year 2015. And we have the meals tax and some enterprise fund expenses as well. So we go through this whole process of figuring out what these numbers are going to be for next year and two that stuck out for us is new growth. Two, three, four years ago, new growth was down and the economy was down, the numbers were under $300,000 a year. Last year was up to $521,000 and this year, we're projecting $475,000. So that's, those are good numbers for new development that's coming into the town. The other case in point is state aid. For the last three years, state aid has been steadily going up, not in huge amounts, but at least it's not going down. So for the last three years, it's been 6.5 million, 6.8 million, and this year, almost $7 million. The next part of our process, after we look at this stuff, is we look at shared expenses and we see what money's going to come out of that before we divide this between the two different entities in town. And those charges are mostly debt and interest and insurance charges, South Shore Votec, state charges, state gives you money and then they take some of it back. So a couple of things to note there is, that's about 13 and a half million dollars of shared expenses, 5.2 million of that is health insurance. So health insurance is probably the single largest line item that we have in this town for our employees. The next one is retirement, which is 3.8 million. That has steadily been going up over the last three years, 3.1, 3.4, 3.6 million. And we see that it will continue going up in the future. The Plymouth Retirement Fund, the Plymouth Retirement Commission has, you know, we're going to have our base increase and then there's going to be an 8% increase on top of that every year as they're trying to get the fund to be self-sufficient by the year So we go through this whole mathematical thing and then we end up coming up with a number that I said is split two-thirds for the school and one-third for the town departments. I know I'm rambling on here, but just a few other indicators that we look at, our bond ratings continues to be very high at a double A plus. Our stabilization fund, as Mora mentioned, is at $2.5 million. For those of you that don't know, that's our savings account, our emergency fund, so if we have some sort of catastrophe, like a big storm or something, we have a source of funds that we can dip into to help pay for that. And our free cash, well, Mora mentioned, it was about $2.8 million in July of 13. After the special town meeting, this special town meeting and this town meeting, it's going to go to about $420,000. And that's about the base minimum that we want to have that cash on hand so that we can run the government. One sec. Okay, just to wrap up, overall, the financial condition of the town is good, good plus. But I think a lot of you have been here for a long time and you know that it's cyclical. Three or four years ago, we went through a lot of cuts and we went, the budgets went down and we got less money from the state and it impacted all of our services. I think we're probably back to the point now where we've been able to replace the cuts that we've had, we've been able to expand in some of the areas that we needed to help, get help in, and we've been able to generate free cash and we've used it fiscally responsible to increase our capital and improve our infrastructure with, you know, one-time expenses and we're trying to not bond as many things. So overall, I think it was unanimous decision of the forecasting committee that our numbers are pretty good and that the financial condition of the town is relatively strong. Thank you.
Just a couple of announcements before we proceed. As of the close of the special town meeting, we had approximately 350 people in attendance. Thank you very much. And then secondly, it's been pointed out to me that some people are actually making telephone calls on their cell phones during the course of the meeting. Please do not do that, you know, if you want to play video poker on it or something, that's fine, but no phone calls. Thank you. All right. Article One, on the motion, Chairman Harris.
I move that the town establish the salaries and compensation of elected town officials as follows for the sum totaling $72,967. Selectmen, chairman and legitimate expenses, $1,500. The selectmen members, legitimate expenses, $2,000, $500 each. Assessors, the chairman and legitimate expenses, $1,200. The assessors members, legitimate expenses, $800, two at $400 each. And the town clerk for personal services, $67,467.
It's been moved, is there a second? Seconded, Selectman Murray, discussion Chairman Harris.
The only change is a color increase for the town clerk, that's all.
From the advisory committee, Chairman Curran.
The advisory board recommends approval of this motion.
Discussion from the floor, there being none, this requires a majority vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Article Two, on the motion, Chairman Harris.
I move that the town reauthorize the revolving accounts pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 52E and a half, as printed in the warrant, and to further close any balance in the planning board revolving account, reauthorized above that exceeds $10,000 at the end of the fiscal year to the general fund.
It's been moved, seconded by Selectman Murray, discussion Chairman Harris.
This is, as I just cited, the Mass General Law, this is required that we do this every year.
From the advisory board, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As indicated, this is an annual article requiring the approval of town meeting. The expenditures indicated here are the maximum amounts that can be spent unless the Board of Selectmen votes otherwise. Revolving funds are to be reauthorized each year in accordance with Mass General Laws. The advisory committee recommends approval of the motion.
Discussion from the floor, there being no one at the mics, approval of this motion requires a majority vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Article Three, on the motion, Chairman Harris.
I move that the town establish a revolving fund for the Situate Harbor Community Center rental fees pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, which shall be kept separate and apart from other monies by the treasurer and into which shall be deposited revenues received that may be spent only for those sources identified below under Source of Funds without further appropriation during fiscal year 2015 and as identified under the Use of Funds and shall be expanded under the direction of the Director of Facilities with said annual amount expended from said revolving account not to exceed the fiscal year 2015 by the limit of $15,000.
It's been moved, is there a second? Seconded, Mr. Vignani, discussion Chairman Harris.
What we're doing is just adding this to the previous article, so next year, this will be part of that revolving fund that will vote to renew. This, again, is the old Pier 44 building, we're trying to expand some use, get more use from that building. We're trying to expand some use, get more use from that building. This is just, this money is just to offset cleanup fees and rentals. It's not a lot of money to rent the building.
From the advisory board, Ms. Karen Conley.
The advisory board voted unanimously in favor of the article and recommends approval of the motion.
Discussion from the floor. There being no one at the mics, approval of this motion requires majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Article four, on the motion. Chairman Harris.
I move that the town authorize the South Shore Regional School District to establish a stabilization fund pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 71, Section 16-G1/2, for the purpose of addressing district capital needs.
Seconded by Mr. Dudahe. Discussion, Chairman Harris.
This is just like our stabilization fund. And what this is going to do, if you remember, I think it was a year or two ago, the director came down from South Shore Votech, and he had to get the majority of the communities that go to the vocational school to vote to support putting on a new roof at that time. What this is doing is trying, so they could do that in-house. They wouldn't have to go to each of the eight communities to get the majority vote to do that, and it'd be used just like ours is.
From the advisory board, Mr. Sand.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As Mr. Harris was mentioning, this article is, a few years ago, the state allowed the ability for the towns to set aside a stabilization fund, similar to, in some respects, the one that we've set aside in our town for major capital improvements. Things that you see in the future that may take a couple of years to set aside capital for certain capital projects that may not be able to tackle in one year. It might be a short-term vision of setting aside monies, let's deal with this in a few years. Many of you, we've created this a few years ago, and set aside monies for large capital projects we don't want to take on in one year. And that's the same process here. So the state approved this article. It's up to, as everyone knows here, we're a member of the South Shore Regional School District, South Shore Voc Tech being the school. We're one of eight communities. Each one of these communities would have to approve this article. It allows for the school there to start setting aside monies into a capital fund to address capital needs. Makes sense. During the course of this article, in researching it, I spoke with several members at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the drafters of this who had worked with the state, all had positive comments on its use. They also suggested I talk with some of the, and actually, the superintendent for South Shore Voc Tech also suggested speaking with the state. And other school districts that have adopted currently this act. I've spoken with Noshova Valley, school administrators, the director of the business department within that school district, which is one of seven communities up in the metro northwest area, so to speak. Their feedback was, they strongly endorse this. They passed this a few years ago, all of their various communities, the seven there. They've been allocating monies towards capital projects, towards the stabilization fund, with success. It's a very efficient mechanism to do this, without having to go between, to all the various towns. So the representative members allocate monies. They've been doing about $200,000 a year for a future capital project. They haven't spent any, but they've been setting aside funds for a capital purchase, and they spoke highly of this. Anyway, the advisory committee had discussed this at length and debated it. It was a majority vote in support of this article. As you can see in your write-ups, there were some concerns regarding the appropriations being at the discretion of our representative authority members, or, excuse me, our representative school committee members, as opposed to taking these capital requests to the various town meetings. Probably not a very efficient method, since there are eight of them, but those you can see were some of the dissenting reasons, or a couple of the dissenting reasons why. So the recommendation was a majority vote, five to two. Thank you.
Discussion from the floor. The member to my left.
Beverly Westerveld, Harbor, 12 Harborview Road.
Ma'am.
Where is that money coming from? The town's assessment, or above and beyond the town's assessment?
To answer the question, Madam McComan.
Good evening. The money would be an annual appropriation, part of their budget, and the town would not vote on it separately, but as part of the budget, as one item.
Okay. And one more question.
Go ahead.
The, when we sell them electricity from the solar array, are we getting money, a check from them, or does this go to offset some of our assessment?
Chairman Harris, to answer the question.
What it is, it's net metering, okay? The way it works is, we get an electric bill every year, every month. We're going to continue to pay that bill every year. Then what happens is, they read the meters at the solar array, solar array, as well as the wind farm, okay? Now, the owner reads that meter. He also gives us a bill at eight, I can't remember the exact number, eight cents per kilowatt hour, okay? Then the National Grid will come out and read that same meter at the same time. Then we will get a check back from the electric company in the amount of like 13.5 cents per kilowatt hour, okay? Then the electricity that is sold to the South Shore Vocational School, yes, we will get money back.
Thank you.
There being no one else at the mic, adoption of this motion requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared a two-thirds vote. Article five, on the motion. Not just a caution, the meeting. Mr. Harris, because there are a number of different capital items, each of which has a different funding mechanism, Chairman Harris has the daunting task of reading one, two, two and a half pages of motions. So, good luck, Sean. I don't know that I could do it, but we're counting on you.
I move that the town appropriate and borrow, or transfer from available funds in the treasury in accordance with Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 7 and 8, and any other enabling authority, the following sums of money totaling $3,606,026, for the purpose of funding the costs of the fiscal year 2015 capital improvement plan, submitted in accordance with Section 6-6 in the Situate Home Rule Chart as follows. Item A, I move to transfer from free cash to the sum of $200,000, and to borrow the sum of $200,000, for the purpose of acquiring an integrated financial system for town and school departments, and to further authorize the treasurer with the approval of the selectman to borrow said sum. Item B, I move to transfer from free cash to the sum of $80,000, and to borrow the sum of $208,000, for the purpose of replacing the radio communications systems for the police and fire departments, and to further authorize the treasurer with the approval of the selectman to borrow said sum. Item C, I move to borrow the sum of $200,000, for the purpose of undertaking roadway improvements for the fiscal year 2015, to further authorize the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen to borrow said sum. Item D, I move to transfer from free cash to the sum of $40,000, to acquire a handicap access van for the school department. Item E, I move to borrow the sum of $300,000, for the purpose of continued investment in the town's four-shore protection program, and to further authorize the treasurer with the approval of the selectman to borrow said sum. Item F, I move to transfer from free cash to the sum of $14,500, and to transfer from capital stabilization fund, the sum of $35,000, for the purpose of fully funding the acquisition of voting machines. Item G, I move to transfer from free cash to the sum of $35,750, for Phase 2 of a two-phase program to replace the geographical information system and permitting program for town departments. Item H, I move to transfer from free cash to the sum of $40,000, for the purpose of purchasing a defibrillator for the fire department.